So we're gonna call the meeting to order at seven oh three P M. And I want to go ahead and start with roll call. And Nick is taking attendance for us tonight.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I can't see myself, so I don't know if my muted or not muted.
No.
Apparently, I'm not muted, so. Okay, welcome all. I'm going to call the roll Victorian app.
President.
Amy Lifeford.
President.
Thank you and welcome. Billy Malone is on the way, I take it?
Yeah, just don't mark him here yet.
Okay. Nick Aronson.
President.
Good, welcome Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Hannah Petrie. Anna? Are you here and maybe muted?
No, not here.
Not here. Very well Sandra Thomas.
He's not on land use.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's listed because we don't have anybody for that position right now, so anyway, it's okay. She's not here.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. Chris O'Malley.
Present.
Okay Veronica Jones.
Here.
Daryl Aranda.
Hello.
Greetings Alan Peck.
Here.
How you doing, Alan?
Doing great.
Good, met Alan today, nice guy. Reggie Wilkins.
I'm filling in for him, so.
Oh.
Oh, Daniel, I'm sorry, I screwed that up. My fault.
It's alright.
I've forgotten him twice now, it's getting to be a habit. Sorry, Daniel, nothing personal.
It's okay. Put me down, Nick. I'm here for him.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll I'll correct the sheet tonight.
No problem, we'll get we'll get that together. Doug Cauliflower.
I'm here.
Hi Doug.
Nick.
Diane's here.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Here and happy to have Daniel on board.
Yes. Happy to hear your voice Sylvia.
Sylvia didn't forget you, Daniel.
We're all we're all good with the roll call.
Great, thanks very much, and we have a quorum. So I I sent out the meeting agenda the other day to everyone and checking to see if anyone has any issues with it or questions. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve it as distributed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Was that Daryl?
Yes.
Okay, Daryl seconded Nick. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as distributed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, Nick sent the meeting minutes out to everyone. I hope everyone got a chance to review those. I know Nick got a couple of changes back.
I did.
So all of the. Okay, all the changes that were submitted have been included in the in the minutes. So Nick, do you want to make a motion to approve as amended?
Barring any changes at this point, I'd like to move that the minutes be approved for December first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, all those. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay.
Is there anybody is, okay, great. Okay, we have quite a lot to do just tonight, and so I am going to skip the chairman report unless there's something that somebody wants me to address. Because we do have a number of items, I want to make sure everybody has time and we don't go too late. Okay, so I'm going to take the agenda down now. So I can see everybody, okay. And we're going to do McDonald's first, which is we have down as being an action item and Veronica will take it away. You're on mute. It's a common it's a common malady.
Christie's here. She's the project manager on this, and we had a presentation last week. I don't know if we need another one tonight. Do we need a short one or?
Last month, right, so.
Everybody's okay with it, okay, so we can move forward, so.
Oh, I was actually gonna say, could we, because I know there were a couple of changes made. I think it would be good to just make sure she expresses what those changes were.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Veronica. Hi, everybody, Christie was course stays here. I think the main changes we made was basically one of the requests that was made during our last meeting saying we need to improve traffic coming from Lincoln Avenue going against the traffic to make a U-turn to line up in the drive-through lane. So we basically made the changes to add more directional signs and paint on the ground. If you guys don't mind, let me share my screen. To show the latest drawing we have. Let me know if you guys can see it. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
So basically, this this is what we're proposing. We're just gonna add two more one-way sign and also the do not enter paint on the ground and also more directional arrows. Paint on the ground. And and here is basically the site plan. You can just see where those things where that painted area is and also the new proposed directional signs right here. And that's the main change we have.
There is also a request for more defined crosswalk space.
The piece that goes across to the corner, right?
Yeah, like this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
There the the two, I'm sorry, this Carlos with McDonald's, we so we do have the two crosswalks, which is the two that Chrissy just pointed out. Up towards right there at the corner and then the other, which is the main entrance, is going to be the main entrance now, is that one correct up at the top. So those are the two main entrance for pedestrians crosswalks.
And will they be restriped or something? I think that's what the folks that have been there.
We're gonna restripe the entire directionals, all the all the verbiage, what we call branding. And that includes the arrows, the drive-through, then do not enter, the crosswalks and and all of our our drive-through entrance and arrows for directional circulation for traffic. Those are all be new branding, new striping.
Great. Does anybody have any other questions? I can't see everybody.
So this is Daniel. So the only other item Carlos was that we discussed was to make sure you got the the hours inserted since the hours changed in our C S D that you put those in the C U P.
Correct, we we talked to the planner, yes, we did that, we talked to the planner to make sure that they include our existing, their current existing hours and he's he will, I'll let Chrissy, I think he said he was fine with it. He said, don't worry about it, but I I do want it for the record to be as well written somewhere.
So we have submitted the request to Stephen Mar from Regional Planning. And he basically saying, yeah, that's not an issue since we're not adding any additional hours. It's we're just keeping it as existing. He has already made a note in the in our application. And then he will, but he do need you guys to counsel to approve it to see, make sure you guys are not opposed to it also. And then he will finalize his approval to include that in our final C U P when that's issued.
Okay, so Veronica, if you'll make a note of that, we'll make sure.
Yeah, we did Christie and I talked about it earlier.
Right.
Yeah, and and just for those who aren't aren't familiar, since I know we have a few new faces, is our C S our recent C S D revision change drive-through hours because most drive-throughs in Altadena back up to residential. That's not the case for this property that we're talking about. And they've already been operating at extended hours outside what our usual C S D limited hours are for. So.
Yeah, so this is a this is, let me just take a minute for this one oh one. So this is a pro this McDonald's has been open for quite some time, a long time. With the hours with the drive-through, we redid our C S D two years ago, three years ago, something like that. Okay, and in there we changed some of this one, two of the things we changed is what Daniel just mentioned. That if you have a drive-through, we're now requiring you to get a C U P to get it approved. It used to be that you that in most in most of Altadena, you couldn't do drive-throughs. But we said, yeah, we want to let drive-throughs go through, but we want to have them be a C U P so we can make sure the hours, the directionals, all those things are work okay. And that and we have, as Daniel mentioned, the hours. When McDonald's went to go put in to make these changes in their drive-through window. Their grandfather, if you will, having the drive-through C U P and the hours thing sort of, you know, came out of. They needed to comply with those now. They're, you know, they're they have, because they're making a change, they have to comply with the new C S D. Okay, so that's why it's here in front of us. Is because they were making this change to the drive-through, which then kicked in the hours and the the fact that they can continue to have the drive-through. So that's what what can happen with with buildings that don't comply with the C S D to begin with, but go to make changes, okay. So are there any other questions regarding the McDonald's project that anybody has? I don't see.
I do, this is Dorothy. I can't I can't see my hands on my computer right now. So again, I know this is a project to add a window for efficiency, but I haven't been able to find out or get the answer as to how many cars are serviced, let's say within an hour, let's say it's sixty cars. I I would like to know that number. And then with the efficiency of this window, will it actually increase the amount of cars in and out of that drive-through?
So on on this one, the drive-through percentage is about seventy percent, which is a bit low from the average. It's not, but right now. So with this window, it's not just the window, but it's also some work interior when within the kitchen, which optimizes how we, you know, make the food deliver and and each step is counted and taken forth into consideration when doing that. So that is to speed up the process of the the product when you're you've got now the three windows. So the first windows you pay, second window is you pick up your your food. And then the third window is you're sent there if you have a special order, a big order or a big order rather, and then so that that allows the second car who's picking up their food in the middle to be able to get out. So the efficiency is there. What that does is basically within an hour for a site like this one, for this location, basically, we've got about probably now with, and again, these numbers are a little bit skewed because of COVID, dining rooms not open and we're we're basically running only drive-through and pickup. So right now, the numbers are about probably about sixty cars per hour. And with the with the this window, and that's right now, so with the window and and the way it operates, it's probably going to be about the same. What's gonna what's going to happen is that the cars are just gonna be less sitting less in the drive-through lane, if you will, so that speeds up. So we're talking about probably about less than two minutes in the drive-through windows. That's what we're looking for. So the number of cars is not going to increase. It's what it is, is the efficiency. So that's how that's what the what we call our B DAP in our pool forward window does. And again, with the kitchen work too, it just speeds up the process in the drive-through. So if you're used to sitting the drive-through for about four minutes or, you know, three to four minutes, this is going to speed it up to about two minutes and hopefully in some in some instances, less than that. So that's what that's doing. So right now, like you answered the question, about sixty plus cars, sixty-two, sixty-three cars. And we don't see, we're not going to see an increase. And again, the numbers are skewed due because of COVID. And it's really, we're we're operating almost like ninety-six percent drive-through. And then every so, you know, we'll get that, we'll get the customers every so often to come in and pick up. But we also have to Uber Eats and pickup, so that that helps as well too where they're coming in. So we're seeing a lot of that. Our increase in the drive-through in terms of efficiency.
Yeah, thank you. So how does Uber Eats and those those work? They actually come in or are they in a drive-through?
They have, yes, that's correct. They have they have parking stalls that we designate. And I don't know if Chrissy can go back. And then what they do is they come in, they park, they come in and we have we have within what we're going to do at this location to as part of the remodel is we're going to have a pickup shelf where right now, they're just coming to the counter, but we'll have a pickup shelf. We're re we're redesigning our front counter. So that's going to have our menu boards is going to be more efficient, less of a menu board, if you will. We're going to have a pickup shelf. We're going to have two registers instead of three. So we're we're going to modernize that whole front counter. And so that's how that operates. They'll come in, park, come in, pick up based on, you know, the order and then they'll leave. And so we do have parking designated for them. I don't know if Chrissy can go back, we'll kind of show you where that will be.
Well, and while we're on the subject, Veronica did some research. So she can.
I went to like four McDonald's and two of them had the three windows. Literally, by the time I ordered and drove up to pick up my meal, it was, she was handing it to me on the two I went to. And I spent less than two minutes. And the the one down here with the one window, I can spend up to four and a half minutes from the time I order to the time I get my food. So it is much, much faster.
But isn't the volume of cars driven by how many people are shopping there?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not based on, I can put, you know, a hundred and fifty cars through in an hour now. I'm making that up, right? But it's based on how many people are really coming to shop, I guess.
Right. I think that because you get your food faster, maybe it might increase. Because it right now, it's very slow. And if I have choice and I want it faster.
Okay, all right. So Nick, did I see that you had a, well, okay, go ahead and and go ahead and show us what we're talking about. The parking stalls, I guess. For Uber Eats.
For the pickup, yeah, Chrissy, can you? Yeah.
I don't think we have showed that on our site plan for now, but Carlos. Correct. Those will be like right here, right, yeah, will be at the corner right across from the third window we're adding, basically.
Yeah, that's correct. Those would be the two designated stalls. We have two. We'll do, and those will be designated and then they park, come in, get the food and then exit.
Okay. Nick, did I see that you had a question?
I don't know if it's, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Carlos, you mentioned at the beginning of what you were talking about within how many cars go through in an hour, et cetera. You mentioned seventy percent. What was that alluding to? I missed that.
Oh, seventy percent drive-through at this location.
Oh, okay, that that that's.
That was pre pre, yeah, pre COVID. That was seventy seventy percent. And again, that's below average on a typical McDonald's drive-through. Typically, the drive-through percentage is about seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, right around there. So we're, this one was is a bit below average, but now with COVID, of course, it's it's much higher.
Would it be safe? Would it be fair to say that?
Hang on, hang on, just a minute.
Would it be fair to say that this third window will basically just fat make the line shorter? Regardless of the volume?
That's correct. It's the efficiency of it. So in other words, it with one window or two windows, you're stuck. If you have a bigger, now, what we were doing before, again, you weren't stuck there, but you as a customer were asked to move move and park your car and then they would bring your food out to you as it was ready. So that's this is to avoid that. This is to give you to the third window and allowing the car in the second in the middle booth to be able to leave if you're there at the third window. So it is for efficiency. And it's a lot, the process is a lot better. Like I said, right now, the ones that don't have that and they do have the either the special or the large order are asked to park at a designated area and then the food is brought out to them. So I don't know if you've anybody's experienced that, but that's on some of the restaurants that we don't have that. So this will eliminate that that task. It'll basically be you go to the third window and you kind of get your food and that second car is not waiting. They get their food and they can go around you and leave.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, can you stop sharing for a minute so I can see the folks? Okay, thanks. Were there any other questions from anybody else? Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, you took away the the image, but I would actually like to look at that image and just ask a question. Sorry, Diane, if we could just put the the map back up.
Yeah.
Just want to flush out my traffic safety brain. So as we're looking at this here. Just in my thinking of traffic flow, is there a reason? Because I see a lot of potential conflict if people are coming in off of Lincoln, let's say, right? And they turn in, they make the right turn. And then they go around to get into the drive-through. That's what I've done when I've come home late at night and gone to McDonald's. So is there a reason at all, like, could that just be one-way traffic? So that there is still an exit point on Woodbury, but there's no reason to have traffic heading south on Lincoln. Does that make sense? Like just a one-way in and then going around, right? And then there that could help alleviate potentially some traffic. And then so does that make sense or? Because if people are parking with Uber and they're walking in, you know, it'd be good if they're just looking for traffic coming from the left, for example, right? And then they're walking in. I I think that could help safety if all the cars are moving in that sort of counter, that counterclockwise direction. That's just a thought I have. And then the other.
Exiting. Go ahead.
Oh, no, yeah. So then it would still follow that kind of one-way traffic flow back to Lincoln, right? And then one could, depending on traffic, it's probably easier to just make the right turn out of there on Lincoln. And then if you're going, like I'm going home, I would get my food, I'd go zip around the thing, get my food and then make the right turn on Woodbury and see if I could shoot across to Lincoln and then turn left. So with that said, my my final thoughts there, that's just a thought I have. It doesn't have to decide one way or the other, but I'm thinking that might be just a more efficient flow. And then and then the last thing that I brought up last time that I get shut down about, but I think it's really important is that this intersection, Lincoln and Woodbury, right now has potential to, again, we love McDonald's and having McDonald's grow and any other business grow in this area is really thinking about traffic safety. So with the efficiency through, even though the line will be shorter, that means more cars, more people will be able to go to McDonald's. And then more cars will be exiting. So I I I do have concern and we have been doing some work on the Safe Streets Committee as it relates to traffic safety along Woodbury. So right now, you know, I would like to at least, you know, I could bring it up again in the town council meeting. But, you know, to really have the county and, you know, and even McDonald's be good stewards in in that traffic safety flow. Right now, again, the county's plan has the bike lane completely disappearing. And traffic collision, can I just finish and then I'll be done? Traffic collisions that this intersection almost matches Woodbury and Fair Oaks. So we as and the county has work to do on the traffic flow. But this could add to, you know, it is a concern and I would love for the safety of the pedestrians and the bicyclists along this Woodbury corridor to really be prioritized. So there's one little patch of grass that's kind of on the west side of your drive. And I don't know if you own that or your parking spots are, so on kind of the west side of your structure, I don't think that's been painted red yet. So that would be just a note. Doesn't have to, you know, it should play into this to some degree because if there's more traffic flowing out because of the great efficiency of McDonald's. I would just want to.
So I would, yeah, Dorothy, I would like to suggest Veronica that we talk to traffic and safety and just see what their thoughts are. And then you can also talk to McDonald's offline, the McDonald's folks offline.
And then at the end of the day, if this could be a positive change for this entire intersection.
Right.
But that's the the great opportunity here.
And we'll talk to the powers that be and see what they think. Okay, so. Okay, so now, are there any other questions? About the project? Otherwise, I think Veronica will make a motion. Can we stop sharing so I can see everybody? Please? Thank you. Okay. You're on mute.
Daryl, you want to go ahead and then I'll make the motion?
All right, well, the project C U P number, the project C U P number is R P P L two zero two zero 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 seven one zero two. It's for the McDonald's located at twenty-one fifty-seven North Lincoln Avenue. Proposed to add an additional drive-through window to the two windows already at the location. This will allow for faster, more efficient service. At last month's land use meeting, we suggested suggested that the additional safety features be added to the proposal, including a more defined crosswalk and making sure no U-turns are allowed while entering or exiting the drive-through. These additional safety features have been included in the.
And so with that, I move that the C U P proposal, R P P L two zero two zero 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 seven one oh two be forwarded to the Altadena Town Council as presented here tonight.
With the recommendation?
With the recommendation, well, with the recommendations that were presented here tonight, again, for the second time.
With conditions?
With the conditions presented here tonight.
Okay, I just want to, so what we want to do, because we have a lot of new folks, is what we do is we take the project, we look at it. Veronica makes a recommendation that the project is approved with conditions. The conditions that we've talked about tonight are the directionals and the crosswalks. And the hours. And so what we will do is take a vote, will will, I need a second for the.
Second.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, so now we we have a second for the for the motion. So if there needs to be any more discussion about the motion, what I what I need us to do, Veronica, is put put officially in the motion that we require the directional signs. The that we will approve the extended hours and that they've agreed to put in crosswalks, restriping of the crosswalks.
Okay, I think everything that Daryl said was what you said except for the hours, right? Is that right? So my motion includes all that Daryl said, including the hours.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have a second on that with that clarification still?
Second.
Okay, Nick Nick seconded. Okay, so all those in favor of approving, of recommending approval of this project with the condition stated to send over to the Altadena Town Council's next meeting. Say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Anybody? Okay, abstain? Okay, so the ayes have it. And so we will see the McDonald's folks in two weeks. Same place, same same Zoom meeting, most the same people. And thanks very much for your time. You can drop off now.
One one quick question. So the next meeting is for, what is the next meeting? Is it to finalize?
Yeah, so this is the land use committee or the working committee, right, for and so you'll go to the real town council, which will look like a lot like this because most. For, and so you'll go to the real town council, which will look like, a lot like this, because most of these people are on town council. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, you'll come before town council, uh, in two weeks at seven PM. Um, we'll get you the, the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, so basically, we're almost there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye-bye, Kristy.
Thank you, bye.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, thanks, everybody for that. I appreciate your time and input. Um, we're going to go to the next item, which is, uh, Victoria and the presentation on the twenty-seven fifty-seven Wind Rock.
Hello, everyone. Um, I see that we have the homeowner in attendance as well as the architect. Is that correct, Alon? Is that a yes? Did I make that up? Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so I'll present. Uh, I talked to Carrie and I'll walk through my understanding of the project. I visited the location. Um, and then we can take any questions from the land use committee members that you might be able to answer, Alon, if not, uh, Carrie. So we are talking about, uh, a minor CUP, um, number R P P, as in Paul L two zero two zero 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 five six four six. It's a single-family home located at twenty-seven fifty-seven Wind Rock. Let me see if I can share, um, some information with you guys that I sent out earlier. Of course, let's see, if I can share this. Okay, hold on. Okay. So can you guys, Sylvia, can you give me a thumbs up that you can see that? Okay, so this is the, um, this is the property uh, that exists now. It's a single-family home. It's a mid-mod home. This extension here, I'm sorry, this addition here in the back of the home is an unpermitted addition that was constructed. Nobody really knows for sure how long ago, but it's thought to be at least thirty or forty years ago by virtue of the neighbors in the area who have said it's been there as long as they've lived in this neighborhood. Um, I should also note that this is a cul-de-sac and that this home, um, is positioned near the dead end of the cul-de-sac. So this is all front yard here. This is the entrance to the home. You walk in, this is, the kitchen is over here. They, the homeowner is updating the floor plan of the home to make it more, um, uh, usable for them. And it was in pulling permits for that project that they uncovered that this particular part of their home had not been properly permitted. So, um, what was I going to say? So I know it's hard to see the pictures. Can I, um, can I zoom? I think I should be able to zoom, yeah. Let's see.
Zooms up by the print button, and if you close the bookmark with the X, it'll make it larger too.
Okay, say that again, Daniel.
Okay, you see the bookmarks on the side? You see the X on the left?
Oh, close my bookmarks, yep.
Close bookmarks, yeah.
Bigger, great, okay.
And then if you go.
Yep.
Print, and there's, that should be, or no, that was fine, I'm sorry.
Fine on me, um.
Um, if you just go under the view up at the top, you should be able to zoom in. There you go. And mark, yeah, or, and just go hundred, hundred percent or something. It's going to be large.
Okay, but at least we'll be able to see the pictures. Let me see if I can get to the picture that's.
Yeah, um, can you explain to everybody why it requires the minor CUP or did I miss that?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I did not get to that point. I was so excited about like zooming.
Yeah, zooming, right.
Okay, so the reason that the, um, let me see if I can get over back to where we were. Okay, the reason that the addition that was unpermitted requires a minor CUP is because the setback does not meet the requirement of the Altadena CSD of twenty-five feet. So this is the edge of the addition. You can also see that this is not a rectangular lot. It does go on an angle. So at the, um, it's between eighteen feet and seventeen, seventeen and eighteen feet, depending on where you measure it, from the back of the property. This back here is the wash. So there are no homes here. There's homes across the street and up over here. Um, so they have a neighbor here and a neighbor here. The home or the, the street also slopes as many of our streets do because of the, the inclines in Altadena. So there is a fence between these two properties that exists now. So these neighbors don't have eyesight into the property. And this neighbor is, is, um, further down in elevation. And there's some plants and whatnot between these two properties. So there's not, this is not an, this is not an obstruction to this property. So these neighbors, these neighbors and the across the street neighbors had already sent in letters of support to the planner.
Right.
Um, and so here we are. So they're trying to get this permitted so that it can be included in the overall square footage of their home and so that it is, um, not a problem for, for a future homeowner. Um, there was discussion with the planner that they could do this, they could convert this to an ADU, um, which is not necessarily what the homeowner would like to do, and it's definitely not what the neighbors want to see happening. Um, but that would be an alternative to the process we're going through now. Now I can take some questions. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get the picture that, okay, so here's the, you can, so this is the addition here. This is a fence between the two properties, uh, the one to the north. Um, and this was prior to, I mean, this, this has been sort of dumb, dumb, um, this is under construction as well too, the, the doors. I don't know if these are in now or not, Carrie, but when I was there, the doors were not in.
No, they're not in.
They're not in, okay. So this is the room here. How many square feet does it represent, Carrie, about?
About two hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
So do we have?
That, that little structure next to the, um, addition has been demolished. Uh, it was just a little storage thing. We demoed it.
Yeah, so this is all clear space here. And let me see if any of these include the pictures. So here's, it's really pixelated up here. I'm going to pull something else up. Let me see if I can get different pictures. Hold on a second. Carrie, let me pull up. I'm going to have to, let me look for the other pictures be, while we take, uh, questions. If there are any, let me stop sharing. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Amy, go ahead.
I'm curious, could you talk a little bit more about the ADU issue? Because that seems like, um, something that should be a part of this decision-making process, whether we would.
No.
Allow that.
Yeah.
We don't make a decision.
It's a little different, yeah, it's a little different, Amy. And it, and, and maybe we didn't explain it well. So there, they have an existing addition. Um, they went, wanted to do some construction. Regional planning, I mean, building and safety probably came out and said, oh, wait, you have this whole part of your building that's not permitted. So what they said was, okay, what do we have to do to get it permitted? And so what they've decided to do is do a minor CUP and get the, the, all we're looking at is the setback. Um, but they needed a minor CUP because the setback was an exception to the Altadena CSD. So the ADU thing was like another way to get it permitted that, but they don't want to have an ADU. That's not what the purpose of the construction on their building is. So, right, so we can't, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a little that, yeah. Okay, are there any other questions for Victoria?
Real quick, I'm sorry. Victoria, uh, you said something about the neighbors sending in letters of support. Are those in the record somewhere? Could I see those?
The planner has them and I have a copy, and they would be provided when we make a motion on this at the next land use committee meeting or prior to that. Plus, I need to, um, yeah, remember.
Hang, hang, Victoria, just a minute. Remember, we're not voting on this tonight, guys. So get your questions out and everything, but we'll, we're going to be voting on it at the next meeting. Go ahead.
So yes, I will have those and I will have any other. Um, I had really sort of hoped to be able to do that in the week between Christmas and New Year. And then with the spike in COVID cases, um, I just didn't even want to like go around. But I will be able to get a letter out and we'll see if there's any additional, um, responses from those that are in proximity. I think whatever the five hundred feet.
Right. So if anybody has any other questions that may come up, I think, Victoria, you sent us all that info, right? And so if you didn't have a chance to read it already, you can take your time to read it and then we'll revisit it at the next meeting.
I see that Veronica has a question.
Oh, sorry, Veronica, go ahead.
I just have a question, just so I understand. Twenty-five feet, you said, is what the CUS, the CSD.
CSD, right.
Right. Twenty-five feet from the next house or twenty-five feet?
No, from the, from the end, from the back of the home to the property line behind.
To the property line behind.
Right. And so instead of twenty-five, what they have is seventeen or eighteen, depending upon where you measure it, is what she said. Right? So they're asking for, they will be asking for an exception to the CSD to have the setback be seventeen or eighteen feet as opposed to twenty-five. Dorothy, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure it's worked out, but has drainage come up at all? Drainage from the back?
I think Alon can answer that.
I can answer, yeah, we, um, hi Dorothy, hi, everybody. Um, yeah, during the, uh, process of planning, we, we actually went through the, the full, um, kind of range of departments with regional planning. And so one of them was drainage. And, uh, you know, there's adequate slope for drainage, but because it's an existing structure, um, and we're not really changing the footprint, there was no need for any modifications. So sheet flow is adequate.
Great, thank you. Billy?
Yeah, um, when Veronica was asking about the twenty-five yard setback and Victoria said, uh, seventeen to eighteen at the back of the structure. Um, it looks to me because the angle of the back of the property is like a triangle. If you actually took it from the furthest point, it looks like it's actually be more than twenty-five feet. So it depends on where, uh, when I saw the county image, it actually measured from, from actually the corner of the property, not from the back of the building, and said the lowest dimension was seventeen feet. If the county is taking that from one corner, and then you use the other corner, the other corner will be over. So, um, and then on top of that, it's my understanding, you know, anytime we're looking at variances of, um, of, of, uh, to the CSD, uh, one thing that we take in consideration is that it matches the architectural integrity of the neighborhood. So, you know, we have side yard setbacks of a minimum of, uh, ten percent or five feet. But in some neighborhoods, like President Streets, the properties are actually on the property line next to the driveway. And so in those neighborhoods, you know, you, 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 you would have, it would match your, uh, uh, architectural integrity of the neighborhood if you did extensions on the property line, even that isn't, doesn't match our CSD. In this particular neighborhood, when I was looking at the plan views of a lot of the residences around it, um, it looks like there's a lot of other properties, especially off of Loma Alta, which is just around the corner, where there are buildings, uh, probably because of the, uh, the elevations of, and, and the hillsides around there, that this, this, the, the rear yard setback uh, being less than twenty-five feet does actually match the architectural integrity of the neighborhood. So that's something to consider.
Thanks, Billy. Okay, anybody else? Sorry, my video went down.
I just wanted to add that, um, it's on the back of the property is on the wash.
Right, that's correct.
Right, so there's a giant wash there. So it seems to me that, um, it's not just that the neighbors behind are okay with it. It seems to me that cross, that the wash is a really important feature, which does seem to me to mitigate the kind of concern you would have about a smaller, um, you know, measurement from the house to the edge of the lot.
Right. Thank you, that's correct. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Victoria. We will, we'll, we'll revisit this project at the next meeting if, if that's, we'll, we'll talk to regional planning and see where they are with the um, approval and everything. Okay, so we're going to move on to Dorothy.
Hello, yes, uh, so, uh, Hannah is also screener. Hi, Hannah. So Hannah and I did some outreach, a little bit of, um, learning. So this is, um, and it's been a little while for us now. Uh, but eighty-two West Palm, uh, is basically, uh, project number. Do you want all that? Am I supposed to say all that, Diane?
You don't have to give it to it now.
All right, anyway.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so eighty-two West Palm, uh, basically is a request to divide a single-family lot into two lots. So, um, details of the development of the property does, is not coming before the committee. So this is primarily for the subdivision. So a, a quick little highlight is Hannah and I did, um, uh, comb the neighborhood, so to speak, um, especially the properties behind and in front. And all, if Chris is on, if he can put, um, uh, it'd be good to show, this is kind of the plots. So this is almost an equal subdivide, Lot One, um, and then Lot Two. So Lot Two is actually the current, there is an actual house, it used to be called the church, or is still affectionately called the church. And Lot One is the empty parcel. So, um, if you can go to the photo of the empty parcel, you can find that, or you can zip through. So there is the above picture, that's kind of the, so that little blue dot there, that's the, sort of the, um, subdivide. So you can see the church is on the right, and then, uh, this will be the new property, uh, with the blue dots. And then, um, there's a close-up view of the photo. So there is a neighbor, and then if you look at the bottom of that picture, uh, there's, uh, it backs up to another lot. So we, um, uh, we haven't heard anything negative from the neighbors about this, uh, at this point. Um, and, um, I think we're going to be reading some letters on this too, Diane?
Yeah, you have them, right?
You, yeah. Oh, I thought you were going to read it in public comments or something, but they were all positive. So if you want to see the letters, I can share it. One was that, uh, right now, the lot has been sitting, because I think this started in twenty-seventeen. Uh, the fence came in, uh, our Jean can kind of talk through it more, uh, so I don't, uh, talk too much there. But, uh, there were definitely some positive comments. There were concerns that, uh, apartments would be coming in or large multi-use developments. And at this point, it's going to be divided as an R one?
Yes, it's an R one. Uh, sorry, I'm coming in.
Thank you. Hi, Jean.
Hi, guys. Uh, it's a subdivision for an R one, probably eighteen hundred square foot home. Uh, the original one, uh, was a tear down, so we only left one wall and we built a brand new house on it. And currently, we have an actor that's living in there. He doesn't want me to give his name up. But the next door is going to be another eighteen hundred square feet, uh, home. Uh, that's the plan with it. Uh, so far, it's been since two thousand seventeen. I haven't gone too far away, uh, too far with it, with the county. Uh, so I'm hoping that we can get this, uh, meeting approved and hopefully we can get a letter of, of recommendation. So that way we can move forward with it. I think it's almost the last puzzle. I did find, uh, that the county was asking for two letters of, uh, that, uh, the, from the trash company, a will serve letter from the trash company and the water company. And I already have those will serve letters for both, uh, for the property.
Okay, so let me do this. Um, one of the emails that we got was from Elliot Gold. Um, he said, I hope, as you saw, I emailed the alert to all of the neighbors. He told everybody about the meeting. Um, the email may, oh, never mind, it doesn't matter. Okay. Uh, the owners of eighty-two West Palm, my neighbor three doors away, is making a wise decision, asking to zone the property into two lots. As it is now, there is a very nice residence on one lot, but the second, the one which will be split, is overgrown by weeds, et cetera. The change will be nice for our neighborhood. That's from Elliot Gold. And then we got.
Or need one more.
Yeah, so there, there was one from Elizabeth Seifel or Sefel. I am not spicing that. Yeah, so there, there was one from Elizabeth Seifel or Sefel, I am not spicing that correctly. Good evening, we are writing in support of the division of the single family lot into two lots. We reside on West Palm Street. On the same block as the lot and would be happy to see the currently big vacant lot developed. Um, we're not voting on the, um, development tonight. We don't have any, um, uh, we're, we're in front of land use division, um, for the, uh, for this, like, I'm sorry, land division, land division on this. Because what we're looking at is having the lot divided. There are no plans, we, there, there's not a CUP for the actual building of the property. So if they meet all the requirements of, um, regional planning and building and safety, when they get to the point where they're building their house, they'll build it by right. But what they need from us is a, a weigh-in on the splitting of the lot. So, um, so let me just say, Dorothy, when we're looking at this, the lot itself today goes from the back of the church, correct? And then across the blank lot, and then across to the house and the garage, right?
Right, where the fences are, you know, you can see that Jean kind of built the fence around the property. I know uh, between the two property easements need to be just defined still.
Right, but what, what, I just want to make sure I understand. The lot, unsplit lot, the unsplit lot goes from the back of the church all the way across to whatever that is on the left, right? Where the car is there, the red car?
Oh, no, it just ends, uh, right where that, uh, before that, that's another property. So.
Okay, all right, so, so it, okay, so it ends a, a lot length past that driveway that's on the, that goes out onto North Palm.
Yeah, let's, we can put the, uh.
It's okay, it's okay. No, it, it's okay. Uh, maybe I was the only one that wasn't seeing, but the lot itself today. Okay, the lot itself today is double that. It's not already divided. It, the, the lot today is the two sections together.
Yeah.
And what they're asking to do is to split that into two plots, two.
The lot itself, sorry, I'm gonna butt in here. Uh, the lot itself is eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. The frontage is one hundred and seven square feet and it's going hundred and seventy-eight feet deep.
Right.
So we're dividing it right in the middle. So each slot is gonna be nine thousand three hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah. Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was, maybe I was the only one that was unclear. Um, that everybody was clear that today, even though it looks like it's divided into two lots, it's not really. That's, that's what I want to make sure everybody, everyone understood, right? So it, it looks like it's two lots, but it's really one. And they want to make it two lots so that it's legally what it looks like.
Can we just show the photos really quick? The, the front, frontage photos? Just so. If you drive by.
If you got them, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
That the neighbor, neighbors will be happy is gone.
Yeah.
Ultimately.
All, all, all built, uh, looking really green, like the, the one next to it.
Yeah, okay, any other?
It's Victoria. Okay, so now can we go back to the, so where this fencing is here in the vacant lot? This, the house to the left and the house to the right are not part of this. We're looking at subdividing this or dividing.
No.
Okay, so can we talk about who, what is, where's the other half of this?
Where that yellow, where that yellow house is.
The other half, okay.
That's what I was trying to say.
No, 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 the, the other ha- half is to the left.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, but in this picture, we're looking at the empty lot that is half of the lot, right?
Yes, and the other half is on the left where you see the gray building, the yellow.
Not on the right, okay.
The yellow property is entirely separate.
But isn't that the church?
No, the white is the, the gray building is the church.
Yeah, the gray one's called the church there.
Right, so then Daniel, that's.
That's on the left, if you're looking at the screen right now.
Yeah, it's not an actual church. They call it the church? Because on the plan, it said that there's a church.
It's, it's actual residence. It used to be a church before.
A, a long time ago, it was a church.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is the full property, the, the, the fence goes down the middle and they're just going to make it look like that, but build a, ultimately build a building in the blank lot.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. I thought the church, I thought the church was a church.
Diane, I, could I come off of that Diane? Thank you for asking that and clarifying. My question is, um, Dorothy, do these lots, it looks like this split will just make those lots match all of the other lots on the street, correct?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's pretty much, I have a high view if someone wants to.
That's what I was seeing, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the right across from the school, um, sort of where Alma Fuerte is and, um, multiple schools. So there's the blue dot is the, the green dot is the church. And the blue dot is the second lot. So you can see how all the homes, it's pretty much in line. In fact, the back of the property lines up. I, I talked to the neighbors on Pine Street and, uh, uh, we had some great conversations and they were happy to see something happen there.
Yeah.
I think the confusion is, is that we're referring to it as a church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I was, yeah.
Even though colloquially they call it the church, for the rest of Altadena, it's a home.
It's an R1 lot, and it's going to be made into two R1 lots.
Exactly.
Well, as far as our desire of having these neighborhoods match each other, that's exactly what this will do.
Yeah. Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Uh, Dorothy, can you stop sharing, please?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, okay, Amy, Amy, go ahead.
So I had a question. Um, one of the documents that Dorothy sent out is the planning subdivision committee report. And currently they list, um, that they do not recommend approval. Um, and there's an indication that they need to build a driveway and the existing fence has to be added to the map, heightened material of the fence. But then there's a second administrative hold. Um, and it, the first point is any zoning violations must be abated prior to the public hearing. What does, what is that referring to? Are there actually zoning, I mean, is the zoning problem just that it's R1 and it's being split? Or is there some other issue that is hidden under that point?
I saw a zoning violation in the, the, the pictures that we were just presented, Amy, so. And that was what my question is, is why isn't that lot cleaned up? There is piles of garbage in it. We just saw it in the image. That is a clear zoning violation.
Right.
Overgrown weeds are a clear zoning violation.
Okay.
They are right to put a hold on this.
Right, so, so.
Well, is there anything beyond the weeds? Um, because it does seem like the two houses are going to be really close together at eighteen hundred square feet. Well, they, because the one house basically fills the lot from on the narrow side, the new, the one that exists.
Right, regional planning and building and safety won't let that happen. So we have, we have rules that say how far your house has to be set back from the side, the front and the back. And so, what, and, and we can't be, we don't have anything at all before us that says anything about what's going to be built, but that's what I tried to say earlier, which I guess I didn't say very well, quite frankly. Um, the, the, this prob, what's before us is splitting the property into two. Anything else that they're going to do with the, with the property, they'll have to go through regional planning and through building and safety. And get their plans approved, plot plan, everything cleaned up, go through all the, is there a driveway? All of that has to do with what they will do once they get the, the land split. And if, when they do that part, um, they want to have a closer setback to the church or something, and they aren't going to be able to meet the CSD, um, yeah, the CSD. Then regional planning will make them get a CUP, which will, or a minor CUP for the setback and come, it, that'll come before us then. Does that make sense? Did I, okay.
Um, I just wondered if there was any other, I mean, because the document from the, um, subdivision committee. I mean, they're only talking about the subdivision and they're putting holds on it. And I didn't know exactly what the other zoning issues might be. So, yeah, because of that one point.
We'll find out, Amy, I'll call, we'll, we'll, we'll find out.
Do you want Jean can talk about it, or do you want to, he's right here?
Oh, okay.
Frontage, the frontage, uh, on the split will be fifty-three and a half feet. So we'll have the proper setbacks for the county. So that way we're, you know, because I know the driveway needs to be thirteen feet. So we'll do a thirteen foot driveway there on the new property. And we'll have, uh, ten foot setback from the other side, from the other neighbor. So we won't be encroaching on the, on the other neighbors.
Yeah, the question, the question is why you have apparently, and I'm, my apologies, I didn't get to that document to read it. But the, um, the question is that in the document that we were giving by, given by regional planning, it says that you have some zoning uh, code violations and, and that there are other holds that are put on the project. Do you know what those are?
The other hold was, there's a chicken coop, there was a chicken coop in the back. So if you look at the picture, there's a little cement block on the back. And they're thinking that's a structure. And I said, no, that's a chicken coop. So that's the one we tore down.
Right, okay.
But it's already been cleaned out, but you know, the weeds are growing. So it's, this has been ongoing for three years and, you know.
Well, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not holding it up. The, the, you know, it, regional planning still has stuff to get through on it. So. Okay, so, uh, Chris, did you have a question? Did, did I see that you had a question?
Really quick, I'm sorry, this might be an obvious question. Jean, thanks for coming. Um, what, what are your ultimate plans for the lot? Do you, are you going to build a single family residence and then sell it, or are you going to rent it out?
Uh, it's not for sale. It's a rental, it's gonna be rental property until, uh, my daughters get married. That'll be their property then.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Daniel.
The single family. So, 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 but let's be clear, there are current zoning violations here. Um, the overgrown weeds and the trash we saw in the pictures that we were presented are a violation of our zoning. And so when is that going to be resolved? Because the county will not approve that unless, you know, because I mean, the picture we just saw that I think Chris or whoever put up on the screen, you could clearly see garbage on that lot.
Every, every spring would do a complete cleaning, but people are bringing in, putting trash in there too. So I'm not able to control that. When we were doing construction, somebody had left two sofas for me on there when I was doing the construction. So not very friendly, uh, situation, but you know, we had to get, throw away those, uh, and then somebody left a fridge. You see a fridge on the property?
Yeah, yeah, the fridge is in the picture.
Yeah, somebody had left a fridge on there for me. So I don't know what to say about that, but.
Well, I think, yeah, I think Dorothy, I think this is one that you could take offline and help him with getting Athens Services or, and/or a no dumping sign and getting the sheriff or something, right? So that's a separate, um.
But those do have to be resolved before the approval of this.
At the minute I get the land divided, I'll definitely will be all cleaned up.
But, but see, Jean, according, but according to the county, those zoning violations must be resolved before they approve this. So you can say you're not going to do anything until they split the land, but they're going to tell you, as they've said, put in this document, that they will not approve the split of the land until you clean up those violations. So you can't sit here and tell us that you're not going to do it.
I can send somebody over to, so, have it done. As soon, as, as soon as we move forward, it's been three years I've been sitting on this property.
Yeah, so.
To be there.
Yeah, so in the end, if you need help with illegal dumping and things like that, um, we may be able to talk to Athens Services or other departments for you on that. But we're not going to be the ones, what our process that we're going through now is not going to hold your project up. And what regional planning is going to get from us is, um, a letter that either says approve with conditions, approve with no conditions, or deny. And according to how, however, we turn out here in the, in the next meeting. So just know that regional planning is going to make, we're do, just doing a recommendation to them. Regional planning is going to make the final decision. They make whatever decision they want to make. And Daniel's right, they won't send it to a hearing until you have everything cleaned up. So that's all we're saying. And it's not, it's not going to hold up our decision though.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's, that's right. I just want to make, try to get you through the process as quickly as possible.
That's, that's right. Regional planning will hold it up. Okay, Amy, go ahead.
Um, well, I was just looking, it's not really a zoning issue, but, um, the last page talks about the location of the sewer. Um, that seems to be one of the sticking points for regional planning. Um, so and that's not really on the documents yet. Um, so I'm wondering, Jean, could you talk a little bit about how the sewer is going to work as, in terms of the proposed plan?
Yeah, with all due respect, the sewer is not something that we're going to be, have any say in or have any, um, they're not asking us to look at that. So they'll look at the sewer when they get the plans for the building, where they see where the, the building's going to be placed and stuff. So my apologies, but that's not something that's, we're going to have any say in.
Although it looks like, it looks like the recommendation at the map not be approved by regional planning is based on a lack of information concerning the subject property. And then it says the removal of this negative recommendation is contingent upon the submission and satisfactory review of the following. The revised tentative map showing the following items, show location of sewer lateral to serve parcel one and two. Um, show how the proposed development is to be served by existing public sewer and call out the proposed points of connection. So that, that actually is important information in terms of the division of the, um, property.
So, oh, so Amy, I'm looking, sorry Diane, I am looking, it looks like they did revise it to show the sewer on the updated. I mean, I see it on the.
Yeah, let me just say this, let me just say this to everybody. Um, because I know we have a lot of new people and this is not easy stuff, guys. This is not, but we have to get to a place where we can compartmentalize what it is there, the regional planning wants us to tell them and what we, they don't need us to tell them, okay? So, and the other thing is that information that we get from regional planning, um, is ongoing and things change and so, um, and they don't always update all their documents. So having said that, what they need a CUP for is physically to divide the property into two properties. What they do with that property is another whole step that may or may not come before us. And if they have sewer issues, then regional planning is going to make them deal with the sewer issues. That they're not going to let a house go in without sewer. That's not what we do here though. We're not reviewing that. There are loads and loads of houses that are built all over Altadena that we never see. All we do is see the things that are not ministerial. So we only see the things that require an exception. And in this case, we've, the, the agreement is that if they're going to split any lots, that regional planning wants that to come before us. What we do is we talk to the neighbors and say, hey, if they split the lot, would it be okay? And we don't, we have no clue what's going to be built on there or, or not built on there, even if they did never build on it. What they're asking us to do is look at just, is it okay if they split the lot? All of the mechanics, all of the, you know, either regional planning, having the plans approved or building and safety, getting the permits approved and, and in, in, installed, all of that is not before us. Does that make sense? They're not asking us to deal with the sewer, Amy.
Hey, I'm just, I'm just reading the document, that's all. I, I hear.
I understand, that's why I'm saying, look, we get a lot of information and what we just have to do is figure out what the pieces that we're looking at. Um, in some cases, by the way, uh, if there's a CUP that's for something and we see issues with something else, not sewer, not, you know, other things like enough parking or, I don't know, there's a lot of other things. Then we can bring those up and make them conditions. But in this case, we're just being asked to split the lot. And we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this again, guys. So I mean, we're. You know. Did somebody else have a question? And we'll all look at those. I I really apologize. I did not have a chance to look at those particular. Documents because I know as a presentation I got to it. So are there any other questions?
I just have a comment. This is Nuri Flau, the engineer who prepared the tentative map. I just realized I was on mute for this entire time, but I just.
Okay.
Yeah, this is an updated tentative map, so whatever you're reading is actually old. And the sewer line that they were referring to is on it right now. The reason the vacant lot doesn't have a sewer line because there's no building being proposed, so it wouldn't have one.
Right.
We wouldn't know where to put the sewer line until you put a a house on top. So that's why it's their sewer line on it. So we can only show the existing one and the water line. Okay, now the, we submitted a sewer analysis to Public Works for the. Proposed subdivision and they've already approved that. So as far as the LA County Sanitation Department is concerned, we're already approved for an additional house. And the lateral can go in and, alright, so the sewer main is is. Can accept an additional house. It's just one house, so. There isn't much, but the sewer analysis has already been prepared and approved.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Nuri.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, we we went through the holiday and it's the new year, so. At the end of the day, the planner was on vacation. She just got back and we were trying to get this in just to help time things out.
Yeah. Okay, but but you know, but what, okay, go ahead.
As far as the zoning is concerned, the only thing I know about is the certificate of compliance, which means that the lot is an illegal lot and we need to. Apply a. Or submit an application for certificate of compliance. The lot was done. I believe after 1972 by deed, so therefore it will become legal once the certificate of compliance is approved. And so we will submit that within the following week.
Okay, but, okay, so thanks very much. Let me just say to everybody, because we do have a whole bunch of new people. I'm impressed you read all that, Amy. I'm I'm guessing that most of the other folks did not. And I know I on this particular one, I didn't get a chance to read it. So. Thanks for doing that and we're always happy to have folks that are involved enough to, you know, to read everything. Remember. We're not voting on this one tonight, so it's not as critical for tonight. We'll we'll see it again next month. Any other questions? Okay, thanks so much for your information tonight and we will see you next month. I guess, unless we get, unless it gets hung up in regional planning or something, okay? We did pub the public comment for this, the public comment for this project we did. When I read those emails. So and I, unless somebody else has general public comment. I do not, I didn't get any general public comment emails. And I did not get anybody telling me they needed to do a census tract report, so. Okay, there's a couple of things, just housekeeping things before we adjourn. Nick has agreed to take minutes for the committee this year. I I will be contacting some of you for some of the other. Things that we need to get done. So anyway, I'll just to let you know, we're, I'm still working on the the. Clerical stuff, I guess, for the committee right now. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, did you have a question, Dorothy?
Oh, I, this is just, I'll share it with everybody, but the county will be planting Parkway trees. In various parts of Altadena. Everyone didn't catch this, so I'll forward it. Parkway trees.
Great.
I have one question, guys. Well, next month, will I be getting the letter from the council?
No, well, so the plan will be for you to come bring again, come before this committee. The first Tuesday of February. And we will vote on that project as we did the McDonald's project today. And we will vote to recommend that it goes to town council two weeks after the February, I don't know what's the date of that. February 1st, is it? Anyway, two weeks later. February 2nd, okay, so February 2nd. And then so on February 16th. Did you like I did that math so fast? 16th, on February 16th, what you'll come to the town council meeting, the town council will vote on what the recommendation is and then the letter will be written and sent down.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Dorothy, did you have something else?
No, I was waiting.
Okay, all right. Okay, who said motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Daryl said motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All right, thanks, everybody. We have a lot to do tonight. I really appreciate your time. Okay. Thanks very much.
Everybody.
Okay, bye, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye bye.
Bye, thank you.
Good night. Happy New Year.